Testing.
Good morning. It's ten thirty. We're here for our workshop and we're going to reconvene the budget workshop. And first up on the list is Mr. McCart, planning and building. Sir, welcome.
Uh, thank you. And I, I take it you'll put the numbers on the screen?
Pretty pleased. Talk into the mic. I'm deaf as can be.
Okay. Usually I'm not one that's been told that I'm quiet, so. I'll speak up. Okay, so um, I'm going to preface this whole budget review by saying that I made a lot of changes from what was uh, previous done, previously done in the budget. Um, I will tell you that uh, my inkling was that uh, we weren't actually putting expenses and revenue realistic in the past in my department. And that's not to blame anybody. That's just to state the fact that I can see from the trends that I was able to do. So um, we'll start with the expense side, or excuse me, the revenue side. Uh, on the buildings, you'll notice that I did increase the overall from what was adopted in twenty twenty five. Um, this is to be more realistic with what the actual numbers I expect to get in. I expect the building permits to be fairly steady in twenty twenty six, uh, but flat. Uh, we're down from the twenty-three, twenty-four timeframe. Uh, but overall, uh, we're not doing super bad. Uh, I know we're staying pretty busy. But commercial work versus um, residential work changes that. And I also expect um, with the number of uh, planned unit developments and long plats that we have done and approved over the last year or two, I expect to see a lot more residential development in twenty twenty-six.
Question here for you.
Sure.
We're at three eighty-five to date. This is our adopted budget. Is that, are we gonna, are we gonna make it?
Uh, actually, we're at three eighty-nine as of today. And yes, I expect more permits to come in before the end of December. I have several more in the works.
But we think that this number will cover it.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, the, actually, the four fifty. Um, I did an extrapolation out. And I do expect those numbers to be more in the line of about four hundred and eighty-five if everything were to stay consistent. But it usually slows down a little bit during the holidays. So that's, that's why I, I did the four fifty. And I tend to be a little bit conservative in my revenue, but I, I also want to be realistic with it. Um, so the other thing I did was right here. I'm proposing that we add a two percent technology fee.
To the cost of a permit.
To the cost of a permit. And this would be both on the planning and building side. I listed it here separately. Um, I don't really need, obviously, those workshops. We won't have an answer today, but I would look for your feedback on that. The idea is to be able to pay to get the, the training and the program and the technology developed and stay ongoing to get our SmartGov program to be out facing. And I know we're working on that right now. Um, you know, I know IT's got some of the training dollars in there for us to do that. It does take a little bit of training on our side uh, to keep up with the changes that are made in those programs. Um, and again, it doesn't necessarily have to be the two percent. It can be a different percentage. And we can put it in the fee as we adopt the fees, or we can just add the two percent to the top as a technology fee. That would be your gentleman's choice. But it's my recommendation that we do that to cover our cost. I think it's reasonable. And as a, a builder, I mean, if you're a homeowner and you're coming in one time, probably not, you know, looked at super favorably. But if you're a contractor bringing in everybody's applications constantly and want them to move quickly, that's the intent here is to get that out facing where you can dump them in. It processes at a parallel process instead of, you know, a linear process. So that's my proposal. Obviously, it would take a specific action to implement that.
Every indication that I have heard from contractors and developers is that they would like to have access where that they don't have to physically call and ask questions where they can access that. So um, from every indication that I've had, they would be in favor of that.
Yeah. And, and SmartGov is in the um, IT budget, including the training that's there. Um, I'm, I'm just asking you to support that. I think it's, it's a huge boon to get that out facing. Uh, little extra cost for Blue Beam to that integration where we can mark things up. But there's also, um, I know Commissioner Diddy, or you've mentioned to me in the past, AI. There is an AI component to that will actually help us generate letters if people are deficient in their application. Um, it actually will bring a letter up that you just edit a little bit and send out, and that lets people know what they need to submit. Uh, also looking to help, I don't know quite how that's going to work yet because I'm not really up to speed on this program. Uh, as is none of my staff yet. But I'm looking to get the approach permits from uh, Public Works and the permits that we need from the Health Department integrated in there so that they can pull it and drop it uh, also. So we're not waiting on them and they get notified right away.
And, and you already know that it's needed, and so just do it.
Okay, um.
Excuse me, Wes. On, on that, does that take a, you're talking about the two percent increase on the permit?
Yeah, yeah, that would take.
Take a board action?
That would take a board action.
So we're gonna have to have that onto a meeting.
We would have to add that to a meeting.
Yeah, you can't just do it. So what, what is the, what do you think the cost would be on a permit increase? What would it be?
Uh, on most permits, you're talking.
Dollars?
Yeah, dollars. You're not talking, I mean, you get to the great big huge commercial permits. It's going to be considerable amount of dollars.
Okay.
Um, but those tend to be tens of thousands of dollars to begin with.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, two percent is not a large number. But with what I've got figured here, it, it covers most of our expenses for the program, so.
Mr. Danzel, would you uh, get that on one of our future meetings so that we can pass that as a resolution?
Yeah, we would have to advertise uh, for it, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, abs, are, are you wanting, this is a workshop.
Yeah, but we need to get it in order.
Okay.
And so, yeah, we've got to give time notice to that we're going to do this. So if there's anybody that objects, they can.
And it would be your opinion that we do that this year or be effective for this budget that we're discussing, which would be twenty twenty-six?
It would be my desire, Commissioners, if you would let me work with the administrator to come up with those. Because when we get to the planning side, I've got the same thing, and I have more discussion related to fees on the planning side.
Okay.
So if that's, if that's your direction to go ahead and move forward with that out of this work session.
It would be your discretion, it would be my opinion.
It would be, then I would bring you an actual proposal and work with, with uh, Administrator Danzel to, to come up with that.
I will have something uh, in my update next week's meeting that'll give Wes and I enough time to kind of talk about it. And then we'll come up with a, a, a game plan for when we're gonna advertise it and when we're gonna have the hearing and consider it done.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, now if we could go to the, to the expense side. Um, so you'll notice that my overall um, wages in the building department are higher um, than they have in the twenty twenty-five budget. Uh, the reason for that is not because we've added staff or expenses on the planning, on the building side of the equation. It's simply reallocating the actual amounts. Uh, we've actually come up with a surplus of dollars from fees that we've brought in the building. And, and Tim can speak to this a little bit. For the last several years, you're not supposed to really do that. You're supposed to be pretty even with your building department. But none of my time was being allocated, um, none of the planning staff at all was being allocated. Yet all the site plan reviews are all done on the building side. So we're, you know, actually justifying it to the, to the state auditor. We're better off with this reallocation than we would be without it.
You're putting it where it belongs.
And just a quick point, um, so on the planning side, you've got it going down. So to, to Wes's point, the, on the building side it had gone up, but on this side, um, the numbers are, are down. And it's just because, as he mentioned, not a, not a change in staffing level, but just where they, where they sit in the budget. And, and yes, it's just, we get audited, you know, every few years or so it seems like on this from the state auditor's office. And so um, Wes just trying to make sure that we're meeting, meeting what we're supposed to with that.
Okay, so now if I look at my uh, non-payroll expenses on my building side, a couple of things I'll point out is I have, I have added some, a request for some building inspector attire. They go out, they get on a job site. Nobody knows who they are. Uh, they have no real identification other than their, their badge. Uh, it would be nice if we could get them some shirts or jackets that actually said, you know, building inspector on it. So we looked a little more professional and, and you're not wanting to get thrown off the job site because they think you're just somebody walking on there. I also added some money related to um, biosuits uh, and safety equipment. Our guys are actually sharing one biohazard suit right now. That's probably not a great idea. Uh, I think they probably should all have their own suit. Um, I mean, if you had to get up in someone else's mask and headgear and stuff like that, I think you'd be a, a little bit offended. So I think from a safety aspect, we need, we need to add that. Um, and then um, there were a few expenses that um, I, I, I couldn't even justify why they were there inside this uh, building department. So when I've reallocated things, I put stuff in proper funds. The, the vehicles weren't really on the vehicle line. You know, having been, you know, involved in budgeting myself from the other side of the table in the past, you know, I want to see things where they actually belong, actually helps our accounting department. So I worked with them to get several things reclassified. And overall, um, we ended up coming down from the twenty twenty-five expenses by four thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars less, even though I am allocating that. I also um, have some new numbers on the lease, I guess the fifteen percent. So actually, I can uh, deduct from the building lease part of of the um, budget we put in. I can actually take three hundred and thirty-two dollars away from each side of the request. Uh, so Tim, if you, if you wanted to change that now, or I can get back with you.
The, which one was that?
So that's the lease on the building.
Okay, right there.
Uh, building lease, yeah, this one here.
Okay.
Instead of being twenty-five hundred, that would be two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
How long is that lease?
That lease is a three-year lease um, that we signed.
We just signed it, too.
We just signed it.
Is there any uh, penalties for getting out of it earlier?
Yes, sir.
There is. You had a professional services up there with a reduction of quite a bit.
Um. Professional services.
Um. Roll down a little bit. I, I seen it, it had a parenthesis, yeah, right there, professional services.
Yeah, so professional services, this was another one that I looked at. So if you look at the past in twenty-three and twenty-four, there are occasionally some commercial um, applications that we get that my building official is not qualified to actually review. So we send that out to be reviewed by an outside entity. That's where professional services come in there. So I tried to look at the past history and kind of know a few of the projects that are coming up from the commercial end that we might see. So I do expect some, but um, quite frankly, I think this number here that was in the twenty twenty-five budget was uh, I'm gonna put it here, I'm gonna put it high in case we need it. Well, if for some reason, you know, we couldn't absorb something like that, uh, you know, we'd have extra fees coming in. I don't have a problem coming back.
Okay.
Saying, explaining the situation that there's additional fees coming in and we need, we need more money there. I'd rather err on the side of being, again, more realistic with what, what do I expect to have happen?
Thank you.
So question, Tim, more for you than for Wes. Um, this, this line here has been different in every single budget um, presentation that we've had. Is that because it's different or it, it, different departments allocate in different ways? Or what's the?
Um, different departments use different lines primarily. It's, they should all be forty-two something, but um, some use forty-two hundred, some use forty-two oh-three, but they're um, likely the same thing in, in each of them. Or, yeah, and some of them have, I guess, self-reimbursed, some have cell phones paid for potentially.
Okay, thank you.
So um, that's all I have on the building side. If we go to the planning side for the revenue. So I'll start with the uh, business licenses. Uh, as you can see, here's the actual numbers that have come in. I, I realistically think that we're going to be uh, well over the, the two hundred thousand number this year. I feel very confident that that number is going to exceed that. Um, if I can, planning. Yeah, I did an extrapolation. If I did an extrapolation and all things were even, which I know they're not, I would be at two hundred and thirty-one. Like I said, not all things are even. So I kind of looked at what has the trend been in the past. Um, not having a lot of experience for a lot of time here, I felt this was a safe guess.
So this right here, was this just, I mean, that's a long, long ways apart. Is that just because, why would that be so far apart?
I think the person that prepared the last budget was not guessing appropriately.
Got it.
That would be my assumption, sir. Um, development permits, um, which is, let's see, where are you at? Other permits, technology fee, business licenses. No, go up, Tim.
Okay.
Okay, so this is business licenses. This fee here is the um, permits that come in for development permits. Um, I know when I got here, I originally said that our permit fees were woefully inadequate. They're way below what they should be. Uh, again, I'm looking at the two percent, but I'm also looking at the fees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I'll need to come in with a formal request, but some of the things I've run across, and I wanted to wait a little while to get a little, little time under our belts so we can have the planner see, you know, how long is it actually taking us to do some of these permits realistically? How long should it take? What should the permit fees be? We have an application for a final plat review that's required. I don't have the application. So we're just using a general application and having them put in other, and there's no fee associated with it. Well, it takes a considerable amount of time when you get, you know, a large plat that comes back in and we have to go over all the conditions, make sure everything's addressed correctly, everything's marked correctly. Uh, you know, it, it, it is a lot of work. It takes a planner about a day to do a, a large one of those. And then I usually do a, a, a quick o-over, overview of all that to make sure that before we sign off on it and it gets recorded that we're not making mistakes. So I will need to bring in um, a new fee schedule for that. That's not to be unexpected. But I did put the number to be more realistic with where we are now. I didn't count on new fees coming in. I kind of expect the, the, the development permit side of the house to actually maybe even go down slightly. Um, you know, I don't, I don't hear of a lot of new developments and, and where they would be other than industrial developments, uh, which I'm already doing the planning on, so. Um, and then, of course, the technology fee. Um, you'll notice on the grant side, uh, I've got three hundred and ninety thousand dollars that I'm adding for the climate grant. Um, I may have to rearrange that number a little bit. Some of that I expected of the five hundred thousand that I, I have the grant for that expires at the end of twenty-six. I thought I was going to get done. I haven't gotten as far as I would anticipate it in this year. So some of that may shift into twenty-six. I've got some conversations over the next probably couple of weeks, and I'll get those new numbers to Tim. But it'll be, it'll be up both sides of the equation. I'll probably add expenses and revenue uh, concurrent with each other to change those numbers. Um, the other grant I've got is the update grant, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for doing the update. Even though we're doing some of the work right now and I expect some of the expenses to come in in twenty twenty-five, all of the revenue will come in in twenty twenty-six. I know you didn't sign for the three hundred and fifty thousand. I have that available to us, though. They broke it up into their different fiscal years. So the money I've got now plus the money I'll get after July one will be a total of three hundred and fifty. Um, and it's been allocated by the state legislature, so uh, feel pretty comfortable in putting that number down. I also added just a little bit of money in, um, let's see, where's that at? Uh, maybe go up a little bit, Tim? No, right here. I think there's a thousand dollars right here. So we've been, we've been having the voluntary stewardship grant come in for many, many years. And we just kind of turn it over to the Conservation District. Well, there should be some oversight to that. So in talking with the Conservation District and the interlocal that we wrote, there is some fees that I'm able to charge my time for that oversight to them, and they'll get the grant and reimburse us for that. So there'll be a little revenue coming in for that. Also, another piece I want to bring up is we have the sublease for the weed board and the pest board. It needs to be increased to, to uh, actually reflect the new lease amount. We also do not have an interlocal or a sublease agreement with those two boards. So just as a cleanup effort, um, you know, it's my intention before the end of the year to work with the administrator and legal and see if we can't get our paperwork in order in that. Transferring funds from one fund which comes back into current expense without having a documentation is, is somewhat um, lack of internal control. So I, I want to make sure that we get that cleaned up.
I appreciate that. About a year ago, there was um, a little bit of a little bit loose in, in some conversation that we had about what are responsibilities, what their responsibilities and so forth. So I appreciate you cleaning that up.
Yeah. So uh, now if we could go down the expense side and to the, to the wages. So as Tim pointed out um, a little earlier, you know, we've shifted out of, out of our um, planning side of the house to the building side as appropriate. Um, you know, I can justify the amount of, of, of money that we've, we've shifted that. I am requesting a long-range planner as a new position. And um, you know, part of that is, is, I'm swamped, guys. I, I can, I have two FTEs on the planning side of the house. I have one that's doing line, uh, licensing, um, that's on the planning side of the house, but not doing anything with planning. And then I have six FTEs on the business side of the house. And so I'm doing all of the long-range planning as well as the department. And um, there are not enough hours in the day to get that done. Um, most of this is grant-funded right now. I would say all of this long-range planner would be grant-funded for twenty twenty-six. This is not going to add to my overall budget. It's going to be offset, so it's not going to take it out of current expense. Uh, I am looking at options because I would like this, this particular position to be uh, kept long-term. There's a, a lot of different things that the, they could do. Some of it's on the economic development side of the house that you guys just added. So I think long-term, um, I would be able to justify keeping this position and bringing in ex, uh, revenue to cover a large portion of that uh, ongoing. I realize that's probably a discussion for twenty twenty-seven. And if that weren't to happen, that, you know, would, it'd be subject to, you know, what money do we have? Uh, but it is my desire to hire this as a, as a permanent and actually come to you as soon as I get the job description done and start getting them on board in twenty twenty-five, uh, just as a heads up.
So Wes, uh, just a question on that. Your grant funding, does it have to be spent by a certain term?
Um, so the money I have for the climate grant currently and the grant for um, the update is through the end of twenty twenty-six. However, there was extra money in the twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-six climate grant, which we have two hundred thousand more available to us. And so some of that may be available for me to apply to for long-term for twenty, twenty-seven calendar year uh, for implementation. Um, there's some other grants that I'll be looking into to see if I can help offset that. And with the economic side of the house, uh, there are some things, you know, if I'm going to spend more time doing things from the economic side of the house, um, you know, which we'll get into in a few minutes here, then I think we can actually allocate, reallocate some of my salary away from planning in, to, to free that up for that. And that's an outside fund.
He already answered your question? Very, very good, very good. Thank you, Wes. That's where I was going is.
Yeah.
If there's an opportunity here to fund that position from grant money and future grant money, that'd be great.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm trying my darndest not to, to get into uh, any more current expense money than I absolutely would have to, to keep this position. But I think if I didn't hire this as a long-term position, that chances of me finding anybody to help us out over the next year, year and a half is probably zero.
I just want to say I really appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Uh, I've also requested a technical writer position. Um, this would actually happen in twenty twenty-six. Um, this would be a short, this would be a full-time uh, temporary position. It would only be for the grant to help us with some of the grant writing on the um, on the climate side of the house. I've got AHBL as our contractor to do a lot of the work uh, for both the client, the climate part that's required and the comprehensive plan and development regulations update. I think this position would help us um, again, be able to um, get to some of those components that I, I'm not able to get to right now and write some of this. And it would be um, basically, I'm holding some of the grant money back from the consultant we've hired to be able to do some of this hot work in-house, uh, so that it's a little more boots on the ground.
Yep.
I'm not waiting for answers.
This person here would be then only, only available when the grant money is available.
That's correct. It would not be a permanent position that I would be asking for. It would be, be full-time, maybe even part-time temporary. Um, again, I want to bring the long-range planner on.
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to put this in the budget. Uh, I do have the money from the grants to cover both of the positions for twenty twenty-six that I'm asking for. Um.
Are these two individuals also going to be able to help you with the comprehensive update?
That's the, that, that and the climate element piece that we have to do. There's a, there's a considerable amount of work that we can do in-house on the climate side that, you know, why, why have the consultant write a letter to the tribes? If I had, you know, if I had a little more time on my hands, I'd just do it myself. So that's part of what we want to do is try and bring some of this more in-house.
And you'll be able to have more time on your hands if you get these two individuals.
Yes, correct, sir.
Excellent.
Um, now if we can go to the uh, expense side of the house, I can explain a little bit about what's going on in professional services. So in professional services, you can see this is the amount that's been adopted. I will be bringing you a budget amendment proposal that will, um, it's all covered by grant expenses, but it'll be a transfer that I'll need to request before the year is out. And I, I plan to do that within the next few weeks. Uh, but you can see I'm already well overspent on this line. The reason for that is you contracted with AHBL to do work when there was no director here at the beginning of the year.
Yep.
Um, and no planners. So uh, a lot of that in that, most everything in that. So uh, a lot of that in that, most everything in that particular line uh, was expenses that you authorized at the beginning of the year when when we had absolutely no planning staff. Uh, and we let them kind of finish what they were working on and then we've taken over everything in-house. I will also say that um, I've left some money in there uh, in that professional services line. I've added, I've got $30,000 in there because we do occasionally have uh, the need for outside or additional services, professional services. And if I can, as soon as I get this uh, implemented, we've talked about going to a hearing examiner, that would fall under this expense. So I put the money in there for for a hearing examiner uh, in there. And that would also help speed up the processes. Right now, our process, the way it lays out is if I get an application and um, for a conditional use per rent right now, it goes to the planning commission. I've got to wait two weeks after the planning commission meeting to see if anybody files an appeal. And then I have to wait another two weeks to advertise to get it in front of you. It it takes four to five weeks for me to get a simple little conditional use done and burning up all kinds of your time that could be better spent doing things for our community. We get the hearing examiner in here. Most of the things the hearing examiner would be doing would be appealable to the um, Superior Court. There'd be a handful of things that would be appealed to you gentlemen before it would go to Superior Court. But it will speed up the process immensely.
I am very, very in favor of a hearings examiner. I helped the city of Pasco transition over to a hearings examiner and and uh, feel like that that would expedite and help uh, the processes in Franklin County exponentially, so you have my full support.
Yeah, I I've I've talked to you gentlemen kind of one-on-one in different conversations and I got the sense that all of you were on board with that direction and moving that way. So uh, anything we can do to speed the process up and get folks what they need on the ground without having to wait to go through lengthy permit processes to me is where I want to go. Uh, on the climate grant piece, which is this uh, 1181 line, I've got 300,000 uh, allocated in there. That's no, two, excuse me, 290,000 allocated in there. Some of that I've got in this year's, that's another one of those that we talked about on the revenue side. I may have to shift some from 2025 to 2026. But all of that is is covered by grant, by the by the climate element grant that we've got. The comp plan and development regulation professional services line, which is right here. Again, is all covered by the the grant we have for the comp plan update. Uh, of the other expenses, I did exactly what I did on the building side of the house. I reallocated a lot of the expenses to be uh, more appropriate to the line. There was a line on there um, was $250 was in this year. It was um, we're on the expense side. Natural resource, this advisory committee, you'll see that there was $500 adopted in there. That committee hasn't met in what I'm told a decade. So I'm, you know, this is the type of thing that having been a former commissioner drive me nuts and it's not totally inappropriate to have asked for that money, so I've eliminated. And then again, Tim, the same dollar amount for the lease on this side for the for the building lease.
I was just about to confirm that.
Yes. I split it between the two sides of the house. And then when we get all done, um, of course, I've added the lowering of the building lease. This equates um, all of the all of the expenses that are non-payroll expenses. I've actually decreased our budget by $4,365 plus the little the 300 and something for the lease, so little over $4,500 decrease from 2025. And I've also added training on both sides of the house for um, for us going to the conferences that are necessary and the actual training. Some of the some of the training we can do, uh, we're trying to do in-house via Zoom, so there's no travel associated with it, but but our our staff's got to be trained. They have lacked training for for years and we need we need to get that back up to speed.
Yeah, a question on the lease. Would you pull it back up to that?
The building lease?
Yeah. So it's this much per month or it's that much per month per side of the house?
So so the lease, I I wrote this down, just didn't say it. The lease is $1,736.25 per month or 20,835 for a year. And I split that into the both sides so that the total is 10,418 for building and the same for planning. But it's 20, it's a little over 20,000, almost 21,000 for the lease of that building.
Thirty three thousand four hundred a month.
And then I do bring in, uh, no, it's a 1736. But um, but and I do I do charge the the weed board and the pest board for a a portion of that, so we we do see a little revenue coming in from outside to help supplant that.
Okay.
So I got two more quick things. Sorry that I'm going over, um, but there was a a lot of changes here and I I did want to bring them to your attention. The uh, in the IT budget, they are added a smart board for my department. And this would be covered by um, you know, it would be used both by the building and the planning department. Right now I have no availability to do teleconferencing other than at your own desktop. So when we're doing pre-op meetings and somebody needs to join us, we're all huddled around with somebody's computer in there or we have to go over to public works and log in or or come down here to room, use room five downstairs. Well, just bringing the staff members I need each way, you know, you're burned up almost an hour of everybody's time by the time you get here, get set up and everything. This smart board, uh, we did look and see the sheriff does have one of these and I will tell you based on what I've seen, this would be a huge boon. I'm able to bring up some of the maps we have from the GIS layers. You're actually able to go up there and draw on the map so you can and then save that picture to the file. So if somebody wants to talk about options on how they can develop their property, we can give them three or four different options sometimes. And they would have a picture of each one so they could contemplate which one they wanted to go forward with. So from the economic depart uh, development side of the equation, I think this is an absolutely necessary tool. And it would be my suggestion that you approve this in the IT budget and instruct um, Bo to actually bill my department for that equipment. And then we pay for it out of the economic development fund because I I absolutely see the tie to economic development.
What's the total on that? I can't read it on the screen right there. 22,000?
Uh, I don't have the price of the the smart board that was in his, that's in uh, the IT budget and Bo's budget. So I I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $6,000. But I have, we have no, I've got a com, great big huge conference room and all I've got's a a whiteboard in there right now. So again, I'm
I definitely think it's in the best interest of Franklin County for us to increase our our internet technology so that your staff have the ability to to meet with people and do things because it's very inefficient as you described, coming here or going to a different conference room. You need to be able to do this. We're the fastest-growing county in the state of Washington by cap, per capita and you need these tools.
Yeah, it it especially when we start the training for the smart gov, it it really helped if we're all in the same room and we could we could be there rather than everybody at their desk trying to 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 get there and 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 go through these classes.
$11,000 is what they have budgeted for the smart board.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
But that's not just the smart board. That's the associated tools that it takes to make that work, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's the whole thing. Again, I left that up to Bo to put in. I just wanted to put a plug in to make sure that it did occur. The last thing I have is um, you gentlemen did add economic development to my department um, here recently. That was after I did the preliminary budget. So um, one, I would look for a little input from you gentlemen as to what to do there and then I would ask that I work with the administrator to come up with a budget that we could um, bring back to you. That would um, that's going to come out of Tim and I have talked a little bit about how this might work. Uh, essentially, we'd put the expenses on my side, uh, you know, in my budget as a a separate entity like we have the building and planning. And then at the end of the year, we'd either bill um, the .09 fund for that or we'd do a transfer and I'd I'll leave that to the accounting department to tell me which they prefer to do, but um, we'd have all the backup for what we've spent on economic development. So I don't have that for you today.
Mr. Denzel.
I would just second what Wes said. Uh, the the budget uh, submittal process came before we passed the resolution making it planning, building, and economic development. So we'll get together. We we've got a whole list of things that we've started and uh, talking about that we've got to get uh, ironed out before we come to budget adoption time. Thank you, sir.
And and that's all I have unless you gentlemen have any more questions.
Questions, Commissioner. Just want to say thank you, Wes. It is a pleasure having you down here in Franklin County.
Amen to that.
Well, I I've I've got to admit, gentlemen, um, I've been out there. I've been on your side of the fence and this is the very first time I've had to be on this side. And it is a little nerve-wracking being here.
Are we are we not smiling enough or are we
No, no.
Too much of a scowl or?
I'm used to the one, I'm used to the being the person that's saying, no, sorry, we can't do that. No, we can't afford that.
Is that what you're asking of us?
No, I'm not asking for it. That's why I'm nervous.
Go bring Barney in, try to relieve some of the tension.
Don't do that. Don't. I I'd recommend you decline that offer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Next, we have Mr. Erdman. Welcome.
Thank you.
By the way, they're resurfacing that road two layers out there in front of Lamb Weston. Why is why is that?
Because I want it to last.
Okay, because up the road, they're a little bit further on all-weather section between self-landing and the Squatzel. It could use it too.
Oh, yeah, we'll get there. We'll get there. It's it's, you know, the part of a set, that was clear back when I started here in 91. That was the very first project I worked on. And uh, that's when it got paved. We've been preserving it for now. Now it says it's time to be, do what we did, which we shaved some of it off and 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 we're going to repave it and make it stronger and hopefully it'll last another 35, 40 years.
Well, this here looks like it's going to last a long time.
That's what we try to do.
That's excellent. We're going to make sure you have your funds to keep going on this projects.
Most appreciated and I hopefully, you know, for the for the public's sake, I think that's in the best interest, so. We're we're starting off with solid waste, is that right? I got like three
Yes.
Different budgets. I gotta roam around through here, so.
Probation work crew too.
And the probation work, yeah, we got two two budgets in in solid waste. Can you guys hear me good enough? I I I'm kind of deaf too, so I I can't really hear if I'm in the mic or not, so.
You're doing good.
Okay. So the first uh, budget that I have is the operations budget. Uh, this is primarily funded through the local solid waste financial assistance grant. This is kind of, you know, the the overhead for that that department. We run the moderate risk waste, um, organics management, solid and hazardous hazardous waste management plan, which is the solid waste plan, which is currently being put together um, with the help of the um, solid waste advisory council. And it also oversees recycling operations in the county or as our part of it, we help in payment collection and and transportation of recycled materials by a local provider. So this also provides salaries and benefits for um, our solid waste. This used position used to be had a a dedicated person uh, to it. After she retired, I assigned one of my project managers uh, on my my staff to take that over. So that position is kind of part-time solid waste, part-time county road. So some some of her wages come out of of this grant as well as uh, some others and also work that she does on the on the county roadside, hunting grants for us and 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 other project management tools. So this is completely funded by grants. There's nothing that comes out of current expense to to cover solid waste. If there are any questions or anything you want me to
Questions, anybody?
Focus on?
Continue on.
All right. That takes us to the probationary crew. This is really, you know, this is very straightforward. This is uh, in partnership with the with the court. We run a probationary crew to go out and pick up litter, uh, illegal dump sites, um, clean things up, so Department of Ecology provides a grant for that. It's called the uh, CLCP or the Community Litter Cleanup Program. And that helps uh, fund that program. And we see a lot of benefit from having that, you know, that flexible crew. Well, it's been kind of up and down lately because I I know we've had issues on the personnel side, lost person that was running that crew and then we had a temporary and then I believe they went back to their teaching job, so I don't know if 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 that is being filled yet or not. I know Shirley on my side and and Tiffany over at the courts, they're working on on that, so. Typically, we let the the court side handle who that employee is because oftentimes it's a a probation officer as well as uh, running the the probationary crew.
You said Tiffany, did you mean Trinity?
I might, I'm sorry, did I misspeak? Yeah, may Trinity, so.
It's district court, yes.
District court, yeah.
All right, any questions?
All right, now, the big dog budget. The big dog budget, yes, it is. Highlight it, you know, we're looking at uh, and forgive me, I'm still getting used to looking at things in gravity. I'm an old spreadsheet guy, so. Uh, you know, we're we're looking at a budget of about 16 million, 350,000 dollars. Balanced, you know, revenue and expense. 26% of that budget comes from property taxes. That's critical. And it's a little in some ways, it's more than 26% because that's 26% that covers the stuff that we don't have in grants. That's our maintenance. That's our preservation that goes outside what little preservation grants that we get. This is really the flexible stuff. This has let us take care of what needs to be done locally that that isn't covered through state and federal grants.
Did you say 20 or 26 million?
It's 26%. It's about 4 million, about 4.2 million is is what we're anticipating in 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 property tax this year.
26%, okay, thank you.
Yeah. On that, along with another 17% of our budget comes from motor vehicle fuel tax. That's about 2.7 million dollars. That also is is money that is flexible and that we can use for taking care of the everyday operations of the, of the department and, and maintenance and, and, and preservation, stuff that falls out the federal grants. So on the capital side, we're, we have federal grants of about 5.3, 5.4 million this year. And that's going to make up about 33% of our budget. And those are the things that you will see will be, a lot of that's going to be going on North Railroad Avenue. That's going to be up for construction this coming year. That'll be a fairly robust project. We also have a couple of bridges that'll probably start construction at the end of the year and some safety projects throughout the year.
Could we talk about those different things just a little bit? The Railroad Avenue Vineyard project, how does that, how does that raise to the top of the, of the list? Is that at the request of the port or how does that?
Well, one, we had funding for it. That's usually what pushes projects. When we find the right funding for it, it'll push them up. But there was, you know, there was a, a local agreement, city, you know, city Pasco, the port county to develop that area and we're the last leg of that, that road. So we, we said, yeah, we'll put it on our six-year transportation improvement plan. We'll go seek money for it and we did. We obtained money through, North Railroad's got, obtained its money through from BF COG through the federal process, whereas Vineyard, we got in the state process through the rural arterial program from Crab.
So combined, it's, it's all grant funded?
Yes. I mean, there, there's a, you know, I, I can't remember if it's a 13 and a half percent or 10%, but there's always some local money involved generally in the grants. Ranges from, you know, sometimes we're lucky, some projects it's, it's zero, but mostly it runs from 13 and a half to 20% is the county's portion.
And, and is that, that's, we fund that. Does, does the port or, or the city provide any, any assistance to that process?
Well, they were instrumental in helping, you know, get, get us the funding, you know, because that project had that much swell behind it. It, it helped us win the, the money for the project when we were, you know, in a competitive grant environment because it was considered an important regional project. So that helped us obtain the grant funding for it. They also, in the first phase of that, their monies covered quite a, a great deal, portion of county road was constructed in, in, in their portion in the first phase of that project.
Before it was annexed?
Yeah, before it was annexed, so. Yeah, it was typi, it was county road when they did it.
I, while I appreciate that explanation, they didn't do it for the county. They did it for their benefit, knowing that they were annexing.
Yeah, but at least in, in, in respect to them, you know, they didn't build it and leave it for us to take care of, which in some ports that does happen.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Talking about, talking about bridges, if memory serves me correct, there's like 26 bridges that are in deficit in the county that need to be replaced over the next decade.
Yeah, I would say that's probably a, a pretty fair estimate of, of that. We have a lot, you know, we have 80, I think we're down to 83 because we've replaced several system bridges with our non-system bridges with culverts. I believe we're down to the high 30s of those are timber bridges, which all are within have at least a minimum of 50 years. They've been in service. Most of them have been 75, some are pushing 100, which is a long time for a timber bridge. We're blessed, we're in a very good environment for wood bridges. And they, and they do function well. I'm, I'm actually kind of a fan of wood, but. So yeah, we have about 26 that are in that. And the standard's changing, so I don't know if some of those are going to kind of roll off back into being what they consider okay, because if they've changed the
Criteria.
Criteria that we rate bridges and in my 40 some odd years in this line of work, usually when that happens, you got to be even worse than you were before to get on the list. They don't, they don't, they're not dragging bridges in, they're pushing bridges out.
Yeah, so a question on that. It seems from, from my experience that everything that, that we do in government is one-offs. And what I mean by that, could we, could we go and have structurally designed four different bridges or five different bridges and then have, have almost like, you know, Lego blocks. You need one of these, one of these and one of these and that equals this. So build a 20-foot span, build a 40-foot, a 60 and an 80 and say that we're going to, to design it once and now template, you know, this is a, we need a 40 here and we need a 60 here. And, and I recognize that's not universal, but it seems like that we could go and, and, and have, you know, say that in our structural girders, we're going to need these here and over the next 10 years, we're going to need, you know, 22 of these and, and I'm, I'm trying to think of, because the engineering component is a very, very expensive. In my experience, it's 20 to 30% of the cost.
Oh, absolutely.
Is there a way to do that?
Some of them might be, we might be able to do that. It's hard. One of the things that changed over the years is the seismic requirements and stuff. So each site's a little bit different on what it requires.
I'm just trying to think of if, if there was a way to, to reduce an individual project's cost by 20-ish percent times 20 something bridges, all that, that's a very substantial.
Yeah, and we, we did that a little bit with this last go around. We awarded the consultant two bridges to design. I, we, we stay, we, we kind of stay in a certain template. There's a certain type of bridge that we like to use in the county, the bold T girders is, is really kind of the primary one. We don't veer off of that very often. It just depends, each site's a little different. Like I said, skew's a little different and that makes a big difference in how the girders are poured and, and, and all that. You know, picking the right consultant has a lot to do with what the expenses are going to be.
I'm just thinking, you know, instead of looking at it in the individual sites, if we were to look at it, you know, over the longer run and then, you know, take a, use the economy of scale to our advantage.
Yeah, and, and that might be possible. There, there are sometimes grant opportunities where they'll let us bundle projects. The hard thing is just that sometimes they, they want a lot of the, the engineering upfront. And that's, as you said, that's very expensive and that comes out of our pocket. And, you know, unfortunately, I'm not a structural guy. I'm a road guy. We don't do bridges in-house. Some counties can do that in-house. And, you know, it's like my youngsters mature and, and we might be able to take that on someday. Walla Walla County did that for years on their own. They had somebody that just did it. And they were very successful at it.
Just trying to, trying to think outside the box a little bit. Is there a way to, you know, not, not on an individual basis, but kind of looking down the road, is there a way to, to capture some efficiency?
I think there is. I think there's something we can look at.
Okay, thank you.
Craig, I got a question. On that 17% motor fuel tax?
Yes.
That's collected by the state, right?
Yes, it is.
And how long do we have to wait for those funds to come back to us?
We're about two months.
Two months?
Yeah.
Can we use those as collateral against our grants that we have to have money upfront? Or do we have to have that money in-house?
Well, I mean, we, if, if we're, we're cash flowing it, we have to have the money in-house, but motor vehicle fuel collection can be part of that money, you know, we just, it comes two months behind where it was collected. So we're always two months behind.
But we can't use it before we get it?
No.
Can't use it as collateral?
No, well, I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm not much for, for.
Go ahead, Mr. Denzel.
I think if I'm getting the crux of the question right, can you use it as a potential match for future funding to go after grants?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, you know, usually how the, when we go for a grant, they want, you know, you're, you're saying that you have the ability to, to have the, the match for the county's part of it. We'll look at what our, our motor vehicle fuel tax revenues are going to be as part of that equation when we're, we're going, and we're going to say, yeah, we're projecting we have the money to, to do our part of it. And we generally, in fact, we always do. We never not have our part of the money.
Okay. All righty, that's my question. I just wondered how long we had to wait for it.
Yeah, it, it's a ca, it's more of a cash flow thing.
Yep.
You know, you know, and, and it's a, yeah, and, and the part, the hardest thing with motor motor vehicle fuel tax is that, you know, people will look at us, well, why aren't you doing more? Well, all of these tax increases that have been on fuel the last several years. Counties get.
They get zero of the increase.
Zero of the increase. We haven't seen an increase in decades. I think we, there might, we might have got a small amount, I don't know, 10 or 15 years ago.
Have we seen that amount decline or?
Yes.
We have, I figured so.
Yeah, revenues on, on, on motor vehicle fuel tax are either flat or declining. And that's a huge problem, especially with pushing electric vehicles and I'm not against that. It's just that we have to, you know, we need to find a replacement for that revenue. And, and it's, it's difficult because that particular revenue is also constitutionally protected. It cannot be taken away and that's huge. Legislature cannot just on a whim decide they're not going to let us have that money. It is dedicated in the constitution for this purpose. And that's the big issue I have with replacement fundings that they're proposing right now is that I have not seen where they are going to give it the constitutional protection that it needs to have.
Which miles traveled.
Yeah, well, however, whatever, you know, there's, there's several ways they could go about it. I don't necessarily agree with the RUC, but it, because I think the RUC's got too much overhead. You know, it's, you're basically standing up a whole nother infrastructure to count money when you really don't need to. There's other ways to go about it, but I won't go into that.
Mr. Denzel.
It's all impossible at this point anyway. I mean, just to be dead honest with you, we're in the year 2026 almost. And by 2030, the entire new car fleet in the state of Washington has to be non-internal combustion and driven. There, there just simply isn't a way to bridge it in that amount of time. I agree with Mr. Erdman. He made the point that I think was very, was well spoken about that it's a constitutional source of funding. The other part of it too, as and I just, for the edification of everybody, kind of a little bit of the reason, and this is where, this is where this is is so not right, but when those gas tax votes are taking place in Olympia, the way that that'll work is they'll say, well, you know what else is in eastern Washington is Spokane's an eastern Washington? And we're going to finish the north-south freeway if you vote for the gas tax increase. But maybe somebody from the tri-cities back then didn't vote for the gas tax increase, so guess where, you know, they're going to, they're going to aim some of their funding. And so they get pretty cute with, on the gas tax in particular and the, and road projects, what they're going to do with the funding that they get. You probably have all been around and heard this before, but the north-south freeway in Spokane has been guaranteed to be finished since like the 1960s and not been done. And so it's, I think that there is a lot, a little bit of a reason to worry there. The one thing I'll say about Craig Erdman and, and the, you know, so many of the things that we talk about here, and Craig and I talked about this the other day actually, but the, the longer that we cannot touch the road fund, everything that everybody's brought up today is more, is possible. When we talk about the pullout scenario, when it comes to the dangerous roadways, or not dangerous roadways, but the danger that might be incurred there at certain times of the year. When we, the Merrells, I'll never forget the Merrill family, the nice young family with, with the two little blond-headed boys that came in and asked if they could get and mother didier, 34 years young, asking about if there can be things done. The way that, the only way that we can do that is if we stay on a program where we don't tap into the, the, the road fund. We don't, don't do, we don't do diversions, we don't do shifts and, and Craig has put our money to good work. Just wanted to say that and thank you.
Well, thank you. We try. I mean, got a dedicated staff. We care about our road system. We've, I, I, I want to give my staff credit. I think they've done an incredible job over the last 10 years because we've had, you know, it's been financially difficult. We've had to spread the jam pretty darn thin. And I'm still proud of the condition of our roads, you know, I, I, I realize that, you know, and people are always going to complain. They're, they're not perfect and they're never going to be perfect. But when I go and drive our roads, for the most part, they're very, very solid. I have been in places in this state where they are not nearly as good. And, and that is attributed to not, to me at all, it's to my staff because they're the ones that are out there taking care of them and making these roads last a lot longer than what the book says they should. And all the kudos to them.
Kudos to you too, Craig, because when I came in as a commissioner, that road fund was seriously robbed. And my, it's been my objective to give you back the money you need to keep these roads. And I think we've got a commission now that are going to make sure that that happens.
And I'm, it's, it's falling on welcome ears, believe me. You know, and, and, you know, be patient with us, you know, that, for a long time, you know, we've had some pretty significant shifts in the road fund and, and, you know, I've, I've had to come back and borrow money that was taken in a shift and borrow it back to, to cash flow the outfit. My, my primary goal, at least for this first couple of years, is to get county road not to have to come for cash flow loans. And I think we're, we're looking at not doing that next year and I'm really proud of that. I, I want us to be standalone and take care of ourselves and, and start building up this cash flow. I, I'd like to point out some of the highlights of what we are going to do that we didn't, because of the shift is that we're going to now get very, very close to what I consider the target range for our preservation work, which is 50 to 60 miles a year. And we're going to do 50, 50 miles this coming year. That's, that's, that's what we can do when we do it. Now, I was going to be, I'll be honest with you, I kind of had reservations about going all in like that just the first year because I kind of wanted to, I kind of want to get us, build our, our cash reserve up a little bit. But on the other hand, we've, we've deferred maintenance for so long, it's like my road supervisor, our road, chief of road operations was right. It's like, we, we just got to get after it. So that's what we're going to do. So that's, that's a huge thing for us and, and, you know, people on the outside sometimes just look at, that's all that stuff that's inconvenient. The sticky tar that's on the road and the oil and the gravel and the chips flying in the air, but those processes make your roads last a lot longer.
While we're on the topic of borrowed money, we did loan you 500,000, I believe.
That'll be back at the end of the year and that will be the last, hopefully the last time you will see us.
Thank you, because I was just, I hate asking the question, but it has been prolonged for a year or two.
Yeah, we had to make it stretch a little longer.
That's all right.
You know, it, we're on track. It looks like.
We're only charging 20% interest, so it's okay.
We'll have it back to you hopefully by the end of the year. That's, that's the, the goal. And we look, you know, looking at our books, we look financially strong enough to do that. So I, I, nobody wants to get out from under that more than I do. I, I, I'm just, maybe I'm in the wrong line of work. I'm just debt adverse. I just don't like paying for, if I can build with something, why should I pay debt for it?
Yep, and we're determined to get our rainy day fund up where it needs to be and that's about 7 million. We're a long ways off.
It takes a while. You gotta, you know, but it, once you get to a certain point, compounds and then, you know, you're off to the races. And that's where we're going to try and get in the next couple of years is where, where, where there, we have that carryover. And then we can start looking at doing some projects to improve some of the local roads.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or are we through it? Did we get through it, Tim?
Other, yeah, I can go over some other stuff if you.
Absolutely.
You know, a breakdown of, I kind of went over the revenue side of it a little bit. You know, things we do, you know, we're spending about $2.3 million in preservation this year. That's about 14% of the budget. You know, things we do, you know, we're spending, uh, about $2.3 million in preservation this year. That's about 14% of the budget. Uh, another 11, uh, 1.8 million or 11% on, on the gravel roads, so that we should see some improvement in that. Uh, the big one, the one that, that, this is, this is where things can all go kind of a little bit sideways for us. Is winter operations. Now, we only, we have $425,000 set aside for winter operations, and generally, that's just fine. Unless there's, it's not fine, which.
Good unless it's not.
Yeah, you know, and, and predicting the weather in this country for winter is ah, very frustrating because you can go for years and it's like, you know, it, it can be 60 on Christmas, it can be 60 below on Christmas.
Yep.
You know.
I've only seen 25 below.
You know, yeah. So hopefully we'll be okay there, but that could, that could nibble into some of these other projects, uh, but.
So you have 425,000 allocated for the winter route snow removal?
Yeah, that's, you know, bunker for, that's our sand and.
So how long do you think that was, that would be good for? A week, two weeks?
Well, it just depends on what we're, you know, if we're just doing normal de-icing operations and doing some sand here and there, that, that would get us through a, a fairly typical three months of winter, you know. February, January, February, front end of March, usually when, uh, we're going to burn that. And sometimes in the back end in, in November and December, but we've been very fortunate the last few years. We really haven't had any really bad winter weather in November or December. I mean, we'll get a skip here and there, and that's, you know, we're out for a day and the sun.
I don't know what it is, but the last two weeks, it just seems like.
Oh, don't tell me.
We didn't have fall.
I know, and now, now it's. Yeah, I know, it's, I've had to scrape ice off of my rig every morning. It's like, I'm not ready for that, but.
Alrighty. Anything else?
You know, we've got a pretty, pretty good capital budget, uh, capital improvement budget this year, so that's, um, that's, that's something that fluxes. Some, sometimes that's the lion's share of the budget, and sometimes it's not. But, you know, we have several projects that are going to be in construction this year, so that's a lot of money. Going out about 5.2 million in, in construction. Another 1.7 in engineering, which would be us and consultants and, and so on. So we got a busy year. And, uh, fortunately, we're getting staffed up for it, and, uh, hopefully, we're still very young. We're still learning, making mistakes, and we got, hopefully we'll get a couple more, uh, coming our way in May, um, after graduation. That should enhance our capabilities quite a bit.
Just a comment on the roads. I know we've talked about this, but, um, I would love to help and, uh, go do some of our own crushing, procure some of our own pits and, and help with that. I believe that we could cut our cost on that. Probably not by 50%, but, but we could significantly cut it, and when we're talking about going from 25 miles a year to 60, 70 miles a year, there, I think that there's a, a huge number of, and a huge amount of efficiency to be had there. So if I can be helpful, please let me know.
I, I, I think that's a, a good avenue to pursue. I think there's kind of two ways to, to look at it. And I think part of, um, part of our issue, we, you know, it's expensive for us on the retail side, but it's because we don't really come with a big, we want a big pile of rock. And I think if we want a big pile of rock and we make it competitive, whether it's we, we lease a piece of ground and have somebody crush it for us, or we go to one of the retail sites and say, hey, look, we want a big pile of rock. How much is it going to cost? And then we'll get competitive prices.
Have you made any contact with the Bureau on their crushing system out?
Yeah, we've been reaching out, and it's, you know.
It's not, they don't really want to work with you?
Well, it, it just, it, it's the Bureau, it takes.
Yeah.
And we got, it's like, we've had bad timing like twice where it's like, oh, yeah, I wish you'd have called us two months ago.
The phone works both ways.
Yeah, I know, it does, but it's, it's, you know. So.
Appreciate the effort.
We'll keep him pointed at. We'll try and get that.
It'd be nice to team up with them, and then you could make a pile of rock.
Well, yeah, I, you know, I mean, you know, it's not like there's a shortage of rock in this area or that there's a shortage of use for rock in this area, you know, I.
That's just where that I think that with, with this push to, to not touch the road fund, to try to do this preservation and, and, uh, you know, the cost to, to crush a ton of rock and put it in a pile right now is, is roughly 50% of, of what we're buying our yearly contracted rock for. And so I know that there's, that it's not as easy as saying that it's 50% because right now they load it for that number and we have to.
It's economy of scale, and it just depends on whether the, you know, and going out for bid on contract on some things, sometimes you get just like prices that blow your mind, and other times in a good way, and then sometimes it goes the other way, too, and it's like, holy cow.
And then you get into rock that crushes, and you're not happy with it. There's too, way too many finds.
We've had a few pits that I have crushed in here that were anything but.
Yep. It's a problem then. Then you've paid the money and you ain't got.
Some stuff that's got, you know, it's, it's, it's really crumbly. It's got wormholes in it, and it, it just, it's rubbish.
Yep.
And.
Yep. Alrighty.
Any more questions that I can answer for you on the, on the, on the county roadside?
Any more questions?
Any, I, I was out on a road the other day. I'm trying to think what road it was, and that we, we put down the, uh, oh, mag chloride or whatever it is for dust control and so forth. Um, have we been ramping up or down on that or about the same amount?
Kind of staying even, but I would like to ramp up on it. I think in, in some parts, especially in the irrigated part of the, of, of the county, I think it's a really useful product. It, it does help keep the roads tightened up.
Oh, I know what road it was. It was, it was, uh.
Dayton?
No, it was, uh, fur where it drops down to the river.
Yeah.
I was really impressed.
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough spot.
That's a tough road.
It is.
I lived, I lived in that red barn for a long time.
You got some bad things going on there that make it tough to, to keep it together, um, but.
I will say this about that. The farmers, if they drive it much, they will want to keep their handguns off of it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well.
It'll stick to your vehicle.
We'd kind of like you to do that anyway.
The glue. And it makes big potholes on the roadways, too.
It, it, yeah, it can. I mean, because it's trying to keep things consolidated together because, you know. Well, yeah, I mean, you get a choice. You, you know, you can try and keep it together, and it's going to break up in big pieces, or you don't keep it together, and then it rolls off into the ditch. So. Nothing's perfect in life, unfortunately, and road building is, is, yeah.
And it does keep the dust down.
It, it, yeah, that's the secondary thing. I mean, for us, we don't look at it for, 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 for dust control. We, we're glad that, that it works because we know that helps, uh, our citizens out with the dust control. But for us, it's, it, it's keeping that rock. It's keeping us from having to blade it quite as often, and that saves taxpayers some money because blading's an expensive operation. We spend almost a million dollars a year doing that. We have about 400 miles of it. Of grading, yeah. And, and most of it, majority of it's kind of in the east side of the county and is primitive road, so we don't have to touch that. But the roads that we do have to maintain are kind of, we're on them because they, they get a lot of traffic and it, uh, you know, and they need, a lot of them need some re-graveling. All of them need to be reshaped. That's part of our problem is just that our crowns are too, too flat on these gravel roads, and we need to get them like 4%, so we're getting water off of them, and then they'll last a lot longer. Yep, yeah, that's kind of where it went. I, I got the opportunity to drive one at a, at a conference once, and, and you're not going to hire me to blade roads in this county anytime soon. It was quite an experience.
I'm pretty fond of those. That's what won me.
They are fun. They are fun. It's just like, yeah, you know, you, you get on one of those and do that, you have a newfound respect for people that blade roads for a living. That's, it is, there's, there is an art to it.
Absolutely.
Alright, if there's no more questions, we can move on. Is that it? Motor vehicles?
Motor vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, and, and we, and we have miscellaneous funds, too. I, I don't know if you want to, how, there's not a whole lot illuminating about those.
Motor vehicle miscellaneous funds, yeah.
So to summarize everything that you've done to date, it's relatively neutral as far as I could tell.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we know our processes. It's just a matter of how much money do we get to throw at each process? To put it kind of in, in rough terms. You know, what it takes to maintain roads is, is what it takes to maintain roads. And, and we, what we try to do is, is, is use those resources as effectively as we can, make them go as far as we can.
Maybe you could, I remember you and I had a conversation just recently about how when we first, like, at least when I first got elected, and you were saying earlier on in your career, the rule of thumb was quarter million dollars for a mile.
Yeah.
Now it's up over probably million, million and a half.
Yeah, it might be a million and a quarter now. I, you know, it, it's, it's expensive, you know. I, I asked, uh, my chief financial accountant before he retired, he said, you know, what, what's our current valuation of our road system? So, uh, it's roughly about $300 million is, is what the value of our roads and bridges are on the ground right now. I want to tell you, to replace it all, you can multiply that by at least five. If not much more. Bridges are not cheap. Roads aren't cheap.
And I really like the fact you're going to culvert when you can.
Yeah, when we can, when it makes sense to do it. They're just, it's, it's easier. You know, especially if we're out in gravel roads. We've done a lot of the smaller structures. We've gone to culverts from, from the old wooden ones, and I like them because for two reasons, you know, it's inexpensive and, and they're easy upkeep. And even if things go horribly wrong and you lose one, it's two hours to get the road back open again. Where you lose a bridge.
Yeah.
It's a lot more complicated.
How much, uh, the Bureau, how much say do they have in that quite a bit? Because it's their waterway that you're putting this through.
Yeah, I mean, we have the, what we call Article 9 agreement with them. So they do have, but, you know, it's, it plays to our advantage as, as much to theirs. I mean, it.
When you work together on this, why can't you work together on a gravel pit?
Well, I imagine we can. You know, we, we'll get there. You know, it's just. We're busy looking after our infrastructure. They're busy looking after their infrastructure. Sometimes we're not giving each other much thought, other than when our two infrastructures run into each other and we need to figure something out. Which happens.
Yep. Alright, so we're at, uh, motor vehicles and miscellaneous.
Apologize, I had everything put together this morning. Oh, there we go. It's hidden. So, uh, I mean, probably the, the, the highlight on, on the motor vehicle. In this, this budget, we don't know what it's ultimately going to look like because there's some, some decisions that have to be made inside of current expense. Last year, as part of the last year's budget, we were mandated that we were going to take in all the rolling stock in the county and put it into ERNR. I recommended that we delayed that until this coming year because we didn't, I mean, I, I didn't feel there was fair opportunity for departments to budget for the rental rates. However, there, it, it sounds like there might be potentially somewhere else that, that, that fleet's going to go. So this, this budget is, is, is still kind of, uh, in flux. So right now, it mostly reflects kind of a county road approach to, to ERNR, which we would, um, we will, would stay in. That it's a very beneficial, uh, for us to be in that. Just because of how specialized, you know, we have a lot of big equipment. It's hard to, to get, we like to, uh, and my, my fleet manager's very good at knowing when we're at the breakover line of getting ready stuff and, and getting new. And, you know, we've been, we've been very successful. He's been very successful taking an account that was, well, destitute a dozen years ago, and, and now it's quite robust. And, and doing, and functioning how it's supposed to. So, like I said, this is not the final, uh, probably the final version of it. We'll see. Most of it, um, you know, it's associated with maintenance of the vehicles, fuel parts, mechanical work, just general maintenance. Of that, we keep a certain amount of parts in inventory. We don't, we don't carry a huge amount of inventory, but we like to have a little bit on, on stock because sometimes times of the essence and it takes us. Some things are, for big equipments, easy to track down. Sometimes it's not so easy. But they do a really good job, um, on that. Are there any particular questions on, on? On that, I do have the equipment, the purchase, uh, major equipment, uh, purchase proposal.
Is, is the, the fuel line in this budget?
Yes.
It, it's in here? Would you show us that, Tim?
I believe there should be a fuel line because.
Isn't that it right there, Tim?
So. So what, what all fuel within the county goes through this line?
Uh, all of county road, all the vehicles that are in ERNR. Anybody that has a gas car whose vehicle is in ERNR, all the fuel runs through that. That is part of your rental rate. Pays for fuel, pays for parts, pays for service, pays for replacement cost. That's the components of the, of the rental rate.
So it's my belief that we should have one fuel line item throughout the county, irregardless of, irregardless of department, elected or non-elected, um, should be in one line item. And, and that should be within the public works. Is there, is there a good reason that we shouldn't do it that way? We've been talking about putting, um, technology, software licensing, et cetera, all within the IT. Is there a reason that we shouldn't put all of the fuel within public works?
Bookkeeping wise, it's easier for us to keep it separated. Now, the ERNR fund has to keep its fuel. You know, we have to keep the fuel that's burned inside of that separate from fuel that's burned outside of it.
So if we were to have two different, we were to have ERNR fuels slash everything else?
Probably, you know, and, and, it's, because it would have to be, it'd have to, there'd have to be a financial wall between them. That's, that's just.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that. I just think that, uh, efficiency, economy of scales, you know, contracts, et cetera.
You know, we'd have to look at probably adding, uh, staff person, um, you know, to, to manage, uh, some, some of the extra workload. I mean, we, we're, we're thin on our administrative side anyway right now.
I found that, that in purchasing fuel, when I, when I buy blocks of fuel or, or loads of fuel at a time, that, you know, I could get between 25 cents a gallon plus, um, value, um, simply, simply by contracting versus just driving to the pump.
Yeah, uh, there's, there's some advantages to bidding out fuel. It works better with, when you're, for smaller counties where they're, they have one shop and the, and the fuel source that they're fueling from is very local and very nearby. We're spread out over 1,200 square miles. Not, there's not necessarily Pacific Pride or, uh, although any time more there, there, there seems to be, but, or, or the, um, CFN network. Those are the two main networks that we use for fuel. I mean, we could look at, at, at some process like that.
Yeah, I definitely don't want to make it worse or, or more complicated or arduous. It just seems like right now that, that we have one entity, Franklin County, that's purchasing it. It just seems like right now that, that we have one entity, Franklin County, that's purchasing it with five or seven different, you know, organizations within one organization.
Yeah, and it depends too, cause managing, you know, we have a fiduciary duty and, and we're good. We know in, in public works and, and most of the, the customer and that we have in ERNR that aren't from County Road and stuff. You know, the, the way that the fuel is run, you know, you have a car, you know, card, you're putting the mileage, I mean, you're, you're going through it, not everybody is good about it.
We just, we just make it so it simply won't work, otherwise.
Yeah, well, and I, I don't know the technology of how, how all that, I mean, when I worked at.
I'm, I'm pretty familiar with it, I do it privately in, outside of my job as a commissioner.
We had a two-card system, the rig had a card, the driver had a, a card, you always knew who was fueling which vehicle. Which vehicle was in service and who was driving it, because their, the fuel cards would tell you. Whereas, you know, I have a fuel card, I can use it to fuel any county vehicle. You know, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, that's the assigned vehicle I have, but, but my staff, you know, moves around, they're in different vehicles, depending on what they're doing, so. And sometimes you're buying diesel, sometimes.
Mr. Dinsel.
That's a big one right there, a lot of, you're buying different types of fuel, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, you know, diesel, DEF, you know, we, we've got, I don't know if we got anything in the fleet that still runs on natural gas. But we do still use propane for several functions.
So what I was gonna mention is, is I have seen it work extraordinarily well when there's a RFP or bid process for public works and the, the rest of the county, so two. Basically, to separate them out, and, and then it, it helps with what Craig is talking about. But then it also helps with what Commissioner Bowman's talking about, which is that you get locked in for a better price on the yearly, and so much of the time, and this isn't Craig, and I'm not trying to talk on your time. It's usually where the issue comes into play and where the people, where folks get upset. And that's what it is, it's just feelings, it's not about what's the best thing for the county, but when people get upset about is that they just want to go to the most convenient gas station. One closest. Whereas, um, your commercial fueling network, Pacific Pride, if you look at CFN, I think they've taken in now an additional, I'll have to look this up, but I think they've taken in, it used to be like a Chevron outfit. I think they've taken in now like twenty-five other different. I know Sinclair's part of it, I know Love's is part of it, I know that Conoco is part of it, I know that, uh, what's the one out here? Anyway, there's a, there's quite a few more there, but I, I wouldn't recommend. My personal opinion would be, um, on the fuel side of things, I would, I would leave, uh, fuel, one, one contract for public works and one for, uh, uh, the rest of the county, but have we ever done that? That was gonna be my ques- have we bid out for fuel for?
I, I am told we do not and have not, and that's.
I'm not aware that we have, in, in my time I've been.
It, it is a significant number.
It is.
Cause you're going with buying power and saying, I want to buy a hundred thousand gallons of fuel. And, you know, a hundred thousand gallons at twenty-five to fifty cents a gallon, that's, that's free money that we're not taking advantage of, and it is not a complicated process. You can assign a, a card to an individual, you can decide whether or not they can have just gasoline, they can have diesel, they can have all products. And the, the, the part that I like about is it's, it's very simply auditable. It, it, you have to have vehicle number, you have to have, and it's assigned to an individual. You put in the mileage and it's, and it's very, very simple to, to operate, it's not an expense to do that, that's, that's one of the conveniences coming, comes with doing that. And when you go and, and buy blocks of fuel, it, whether it's, whether it's a tanker load, you know, ten thousand gallons, or it's a quarter of a million gallons, it is, you have buying power and they want, they want to do that. It's how a lot of private business does, you know, that buys fuel at any volume, does it that way.
So Craig, one question that I've had people ask me is, when I notice your road graders, when they pull up to the Pacific Pride out there, they put in over the road diesel, but we're not paying that rate for that over the road. We pay the same as farm diesel, are we not?
I think so, I, don't quote me on that, I'm not an expert on the fuel.
And I'm wondering why we just don't use the farm diesel?
Well, that's a good question, I, I know Greg and I have talked about it before, and I can't remember what, what conclusion we came from. I, I, I think we can, we're looking at another source, uh, the renewable diesel, which is supposed to be significant savings and awesome.
Biodiesel?
I don't know if it's bio or.
I wouldn't.
Right now, they're, they're using the term, it's, it's renewable, which, I don't know.
E eighty-five?
Could be. So I know he's, we've had some talks about using, it's a new product.
I wouldn't, I, I'd be very cautious of that, because this is the biofuels, and we've found problems in the biofuels, especially in gasoline.
So you, you can run on-road diesel in off-road equipment, but you have to go apply for a tax refund, so that you get your road taxes refunded to you.
Right.
But you, but that's an additional process, if you buy die diesel and you want to not pay the road taxes, you have to go and apply for that. So that, if we are putting road diesel in and not applying for that rebate, that's, that's potentially, what is it between, it's like fifty-eight cents a gallon right now?
But my question is, are you being taxed on that? Cause you're a government entity and you don't get taxed, correct?
Well, that's sometimes true, sometimes not true. I mean, there, there are things, you know, we do have to pay sales tax on materials.
It's something to look into.
Yeah, yeah, I will look into that, cause I, to be honest with you, I, I, I don't want to sit here and, and tell you something that I don't know, cause I don't know.
That's a, quite a significant amount of money for that road debt.
Yeah, no, we'll look into, I'll, I'll talk to Greg when he gets, uh, when he gets back in and we'll, we'll do a deep dive and, and, and look at the fuel situation and see if we, if we are leaving money on the table.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Craig?
Unless you want to look at, at our, some of our miscellaneous budgets.
Anything big in them that's changed?
No, I, you know, I'll just point out the one sixty-eight fund is this second half excise tax. And that is, uh, a fund that helps us a great deal. Cause that, that can be used for, for capital projects and, and oftentimes what we do is this, that we will take money out of that to pay a, a pay estimate to a contractor while we're waiting for reimbursement. And then we'll put that money back into that one sixty-eight, but that frees us up and, and keeps the cash flow going and, and keeps, uh, our, our normal day-to-day operations not being tied up with our capital work, so. It's an important fund for us.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Craig, I just want to say thanks to you and your crew out there, they're, you're doing a great job, keep it up.
Well, we try.
And let's, let's really look at these pullouts, we need to start doing something, because it is really getting dangerous out there during harvest.
It is, and, you know, I'm looking at, at possibly, and my, I'll probably put them on when I come for the next year's six-year transportation improvement plan. Probably put something on there, there might be a match for it. In safety funding, that's, that's one avenue I want to explore with it. Hard part right now, at least preliminarily, while I've, I've dug into it, there just isn't a lot of data. There isn't really anybody that's done it for this particular purpose.
I know.
And so there's not really, I, I, you know, I'm kind of like, oh, well, how many of them do I need? How big do they need to be? You know, and so there, it's, it's a more complicated. The construction of them, probably not very complicated, but the engineering side of it and, and the funding side of it might be a lot more complicated.
Okay, well, all I'm saying is, when, like, I just moved to Swather this morning. And if I had two vehicles, I'm getting off the road, letting them buy.
And if there's anything. And, and that's it, I, I would, uh, there is an article, I started, I, I read it. It's this one, it's agricultural equipment on public roads, and it will show you how little data there, there really is out there, but it, it does talk about accidents between public and, and farmer equipment and, and they have some, you know, things that people have been trying to do, but it's an issue that doesn't probably get enough focus.
Exactly.
But it, it's also, it's, you know, it's like, at least from the statistics in here, I think we were talking about point two percent of the accidents involved, fatal accidents involved farm equipment, so, you know, it's a.
That's because they, they cause it, but they're not involved in it. You know what I'm saying? They just keep going down the road when there's.
If you guys come across any, any research to help me on that, I, I would be more than happy to gobble it up, cause I've been looking at it, and like I said, I'm kind of, it's like, this is really new ground. Like I said, so I'm looking for some sort of models, like what, how do we, how do we model them, how, how many of them do we need to have? How big do they have to be? We have to be careful, these are our, our majors. Which are federally funded routes, which means if we don't do this right, like.
On our majors, you mean like three ninety-five, no, we're talking.
Well, what I'm saying is, is if we get federal funding, is that's what makes them all weather roads, it's that we get our money from federal grants for that.
Let's just make Glade and Taylor Flats four lanes from end to end, and then.
Well, there's, you know.
That covers the pullouts.
We're, and it's always been an emphasis of mine, and it's going to continue. It just takes time, it's slow. Those two roads are our main north-south routes. My, my goal is to get them to be forty feet wide. And at least, at least thirty-six feet wide, depending on the thing, mostly forty feet wide. North and south and all-weather, that's the north-south routes, they should be all-weather, they should be forty feet wide. And then have some connectors in between self-landing, um, Eltopia West, things like that, you know, so that there's all-weather system that connects those two. We've got a route to, to three ninety-five one way, and we've got a route to one eighty-two the other. So that we've got traffic going where it's supposed to need to go. That, that part, the, the one eighty-two side, finding a, a, a proper truck route for over there's, that's a bit of a big lift, that's gonna take some, some doing, but still getting all the, the all-weather side of that, those, those two, those corridors in particular are my focus. And in the long term, that's where we want to spend our money, is get those up to all-weather standard. Get them to the proper width, cause those are our busiest corridors.
I do know that since we've been talking about this, we have farmers out there that are willing to join in and help.
Well, and that's, that's one of the things I was trying to, to get at, is we have to be careful about things like getting right-of-way. Because when you're dealing with federal money, if you don't take care of the right-of, even if you're doing projects that don't involve federal money, but someday you're going to spend federal money on this road, and I guarantee you, we will be spending federal money on these roads. If you don't do your, your right-of-way work proper, you can poison them and not be able to get federal money for them.
Gotcha.
And without that, we're in big trouble. So it's just, bear with me, I'm cautious, I don't want to make a fatal mistake. But I do want to get, I do want to solve the problem.
Alrighty. Appreciate it, Craig. Okay, do you want to just keep motoring here, we go to, um.
You know what I would do, Mr. Chairman, out of consideration of her time.
She's here.
I've noticed Sue Grant has been sitting back here, and plus, I felt like saying, are you the source of all that grant funding? But I was gonna see if maybe we could knock that one out first, since, just out of.
Yeah, she's here and.
It's, go quick.
Not occupy any more of her time. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, and I appreciate all of the board's done for us. We're here to serve. And, um, I'm glad we're, you know, we're being looked at for, for what we do. And, and really, you know, like I said, it's, you got good people out there working to keep your roads good.
Thank you.
They're a reflection of their leader.
I'd like to take credit for that, but.
Alrighty. Ms. Grant, are you ready? Welcome.
Thank you. What do you want to know about the RV park?
Well, is there any big change?
I've moved some of my numbers up and down, like, saved where I can. I don't know. Try not to spend if I don't have to. There's some improvements that I would like to do, I don't know if you're interested in those. I think my biggest expense that, that bugs me the most is my credit card fees. My processor, I keep calling them and, I call them once a year and check on them, and they'll lower it about four hundred dollars, and then it'll creep back up again. So I just keep, I keep on them.
What is that expense, the credit card fees, where's it at, right there, you got it labeled?
So far, I've spent twelve thousand dollars.
Okay.
This year.
And, and probably all your customers like to use credit cards, huh?
More and more, yeah, more and more, just.
Do you charge a processing fee or a transaction fee?
We have, um, it's included in the rent, so it's a flat. We don't charge extra.
You don't charge extra for running a credit card?
No. No, it's, we increase the, the rent every year, which includes the credit card fees.
What, what's the limit on stay? It's.
Six months.
Six months, so.
Up to six months.
You know, they have turnover, so the next person that comes in has to run a credit card, if they do, then, yeah, it's, it adds up. And then you have people stay for a week or shorter time and.
Oh, yeah, I have my transits that, that come in and, um.
But you're making us money.
Well, I hope so.
We're happy.
That's what I'm supposed to do, right?
Yes, now. Any big changes in your budget?
Well, I mean, I didn't propose any, but I would, you know, like I said, I would love to increase, the shower situation is always an issue when I have all the softball players across the street and they come in. Showers, I want to upgrade the showers.
Do we know?
Very bad.
I know that they're. I know that they're doing something like four million dollars in upgrades to the Geese's Stadium, are they not addressing any of that?
Why would Geese's Stadium do anything for me?
So you're talking about the softball players coming over and using your park?
When they stay in my park, when they stay, they rent.
That's the softball players, that's like.
Softball players.
Yeah, that's the softball fields, that's Pasco, that's the.
Yeah.
The softball fields in the stadium are both City of Pasco.
Right, so they should be.
I just didn't know if they were making any, but I understand, it's, it's our customers.
Our customers, yeah. Which has changed a little bit this year, every year is different, um, the softball. I had like twenty games last year during the spring and summer, and this year there's been ten. So I talked to Patrick with the city, and he was like, well, we're moving more games over to Richland, which I'm like, hmm, really?
It's beneficial.
Guess I only have thirty-one acres on, do I?
I don't know, fighting over customers.
What is our revenue this year versus? Trying to read there, this year versus last year?
We got, you've got beginning fund balance thrown in there too, so I guess it may be better to take that out. Last year, we had four hundred and sixty-one thousand, um, this year through September, three hundred and thirty-two thousand.
So it's on par, be about the same?
Yeah.
A little bit more. Cause I've already reached my transient, I only budgeted for sixty and I'm already at seventy-eight. And then my, um, resident rent was at two eighty, and now I'm at two forty-four.
It was just a spitball mark.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I like the analogy. Spitball, haven't heard that since grade school. So Ms. Grant, you, you were talking about you'd like to, uh, just, uh, talk about some improvements. Besides the shower, you're wanting to expand this RV park, aren't you not?
I'd like to, but.
And, well, talk to us, what do you, what would you like to see? Where would we expand it to, are we, uh, looking for?
I would add sewer out in my power and water only. I would add sewer out in my power and water only. Um, I think I would get a lot more customers if I have full hookups out front than-
And sewer is all you need for the full hookup?
And a little bit of landscaping, make it a little bit nicer, you know, because it's just a parking lot issue right now. So, um-
Water's there. You just need sewer.
Yes. Water and power are there. Yes.
And how many spots are we talking? If we put the sewer in, would it be twenty more spots, or?
Oh, no. The, the amount of spots would be the same, but it would attract a little bit more.
Okay.
You can charge more for the full hookup?
Yeah.
And I would fill it more. Yes. Yeah. Because it's vacant quite a lot, except for during softball season.
What, what are the spots worth now versus what would they be worth if they were full hookup?
Well, they're empty right now. And I would, could charge seven hundred a month. I could charge the sixty-five a day. I could charge-
So if somebody hooks up today, it's how much a month?
Seven hundred a month or sixty-five a day.
That's with a, that's with a full hookup, correct?
Or a full hookup.
What is they, what are they worth?
It's only five dollars difference. So sixty dollars versus sixty-five a day.
So we would, okay. And so, so you're, the income isn't different. It's, it's the occupancy that would be different?
Correct. Yeah.
So who would we talk to? Somebody, we'd have to have somebody do us an analysis on what that would cost to put sewer into that?
About three years ago, I put bids out there, and it was like, at that time, it was like $42,000 to get it done.
I was gonna say, that's a really easy number to get. I could give us that number pretty close.
Things have changed.
And forty-two thousand for how many spots?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Mm-hmm. Or you can give me the lot over across the Halleian, and we'll just make it all RV out there. What's not being used. It's growing weeds.
The fund does have the available cash to be able to do any of that stuff, too. I mean, there's, um, I mean, we had plugged in, uh, $937,000 is what we're, we were estimating to start next year with.
So there's money there.
How, how much, or how many spaces are we talking about?
There's thirteen out there currently.
Thirteen.
I could probably recoup the, the, what I spend in two years, maybe.
Well, they're not making anything, anything right now, and each spot would bring in eighty-four-hundred if they were full. At the price you gave us, it would be about thirty-five-hundred to put in the sewer.
Make our money back.
We'd make their money back the first year.
Two at the most, but yeah.
Sort of a no-brainer. How many people come and ask if that spot's a bail low sewer, and how many do you turn away? Could, could it be more than thirteen? Could we even-
There's not that much room out there.
No, but there's other spots we could put an RV in there, couldn't we? The parking lot out there, uh, beside the hockey stadium, couldn't we?
Hockey fills it up.
Hockey fills that up?
You're, you're talking about back behind, though?
Yeah.
Where the old horse stalls were.
Yes.
Where are you turning away?
We'd have to redo the roads and the access to Happo, and that would be a whole configuration.
Yeah. Commissioner Mullen had a question.
How many people are you turning away?
Oh, nobody.
Don't keep track?
But, but, not turning away, but won't, won't accept a spot because it doesn't have sewer. Is there many people pulling in there and asking for a rental spot, and then if it don't have sewer, they leave?
No. They, they settle for what I got, usually.
But you, you're-
But if I, if I, for a monthly, I, they want sewer out there. I mean-
Yeah.
You know, otherwise, um, they're having to walk in and use our facilities in one shower, and that becomes a problem. So, yeah. Um, turn away, I don't know. Um, not too many this year. Last year, there was quite a few. Yeah. They'll go to the other parks in the area, the KOA or Columbia Sun.
Well, I think it's certain, certainly something we can entertain a thought on, because it would pay off and start making the county money.
As long as you're not gonna sell my property. Don't sell my park.
Is sewer available immediately adjacent to those?
Where would we install the, the sewer? Is that what you're asking me?
I'm just, I, this is the world that I work in, in my private business, so I know how to look at the different stuff. So sewer is immediately adjacent to, so it's a very, very simple.
Yeah, it's right. When you enter the park, it's like, right there. It's like, I can give you the numbers. I can give you the measurements. I have it like three years ago. Um, I want to say it was thirty feet from where the sewer comes into the park.
Yeah, there's a couple of different ways. You can, you can tap off the main line and then go and just make a home run right down through the middle of the stalls, and, and just pop up at each one.
Yeah.
Or if you go tap the main line, then you have thirteen individual taps, which is much more expensive than just making one tap and then going and running. But anyway, that's-
Come visit me. Let's talk. As far as expenses, I try to keep them all down. The only one that increased a little bit was IT, um, and he told, Bo told me it was because of gravity. Um, and then the credit card fees, which we can't do much about, so.
Well, I want to thank you for doing such a fine job out there. You're doing an incredible job. Very good. And I appreciate all your efforts.
People can't return to the park. They, they come back. I have a lot of repeat customers just because they like the facility. They like me. They like-
I was wondering if you were gonna say that.
They do. I mean-
Me too.
I'm proud of it. I'm proud of, you know, that-
There you go. As you should be.
They like to return, so.
Tim, you may be able to answer this. I believe everywhere else in the county, that at least that I'm aware of, that we charge whatever the credit card processing fee is, we charge to the customer. Um, like, if you want to pay with a credit card here at the treasurer's office or at the auditor's office, I believe you pay that two and a half or three percent. And you're saying we don't charge that?
We've, um, discussed that in the, in the very beginning about adding a fee to it, but then Shirley and Keith Johnson at the time determined that we just raised the rent to incorporate that fee. So it's all inclusive.
How are we compared to other RV parks? Are seven hundred dollars equal to what they're charging?
With the amenities that I have. I don't have the pool. I don't have the workout centers, all that stuff. So, um, each year, we'll do a comparison of what, what the, the rate is going towards, and I have all of their rates. So I look at it all the time.
We're kind of on the low end, if I remember correctly.
I'd say it's comparable, but, I mean, but we're on the lower end of the, with the amenities that I have.
Yeah.
Apples to apples.
Yeah.
Yeah, apples to apples. We're on the low end, I think.
But we were a, a great deal lower, and we raised it, correct? It was a couple of years ago, or a year?
We're still a great deal.
Raised it every year, so.
We should be on the high end, so we're not competing with private.
Yeah, I think that's the risk. I don't, I think we're not supposed to-
Right.
We're not supposed to outprice other private places.
Exactly.
And we are like, I mean, I can go through these if you want to, but they're 595, um, 550, 625, 575. So we're at 700. So we are above, just right there. And then we have some parks in the area that will go up for summer.
Not really.
Not really?
No. Um, I just did a detailed analysis for one of my customers, and, you know, if you go out to Horn Rapids RV, they're a thousand dollars a month. Um, you go just down the road to, um, the KOA, they're significantly higher. Um, so we, we're a good deal. And-
They also do summer rates and winter rates, and we just keep ours the same.
Right. And they do have amenities that we don't have. It's just that people, people, um, that, that's not necessarily a deciding factor that we've found in all the analysis that I've done. I'd be happy to show you the analysis that my, my staff does done on. I've done numerous, numerous different, and, analysis on RV parks here in the last little while.
So who, who are the, uh, the entities that you have just mentioned there? Or their rates?
Uh, so Red Mountain is at 595. Columbia Sun is between 795 and a thousand and five dollars, depending on the length of the spots.
Okay.
Um, Beach RV is 650. Uh, Connel is 600. Um, they just upgraded theirs. Um, Tri-City RV is at 700.
Do you have the-
The KOA is between 575 and a thousand. It just depends on the length of their, either in the newer part or the older part of the-
That's right across the highway there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, Desert Gold is at 550. Moon River is at 790. Horn Rapids is between 625 and 645, and then we're at 700.
All right.
So, and I'll be happy to look at his.
Yeah.
Um-
Well, I just say thank you.
You're welcome.
You're doing a great job out there.
Thank you, Sue.
Do you have recommendations, um, Mr. Bellman? I mean, you can look at them.
Yeah, I'll come, I'll come see you.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And appreciate it.
Let me know if I can do anything else.
Keep making money.
I know you guys concentrate when you come out and you would go to Happo Center, but come visit.
Alrighty, Sue.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Mr. Erdman, do we have any more, or, Mr. Erdman? We grasp back to it. Tim, do we have anything more to go over today?
There was the Happo Center that we had passed over.
We still got that to go over. But are they coming in, HWL?
I don't believe that they are, um, because I don't think they're all here.
So, we're just gonna go over it?
We're gonna go over it, uh-
So, Mr. Denzel, do you want to go over it now?
I think we should. Here's my opinion, is, uh-
Let's finish this.
We should, we look at this budget. Again, this is just a workshop.
Right.
So we've got time. If there's something, like, we don't want to sit here and load the, Tim, up on, you know, a bunch of other extra requests that are coming in late. But I think it would be fair, uh, and I would just yield to you, Tim, do you think it'd be fair just to look at that budget?
Yes, I, yeah, I think we can, um, I think it's, um, not too much different than what, than what was in there previously. There's, I mean, just in event services, I see, um, $550,000 more. Um, so the budget is a little bit higher this year, but, um, but, yeah, I think we can just go through it real quick.
Okay.
So transfers in those are, we get, um, we get, Happo, the Happo Center gets funded by a couple of different funds. Uh, there's the rental car excise tax pays about half of this amount that, that comes in. And then, um, and then the RV park also contributes. It's, they're not exactly half, but it's right, pretty close to half that those two funds contribute into the, into the Happo Center. And that, that pays for our portion of the, of, of the subsidy. And then the City of Pasco pays the other half of the combined subsidy. So you see the hundred, 175,000 here, coming from county funds, and then 175,000 from the City of Pasco. Um, and then event services was raised $550,000. Some of these other things stayed exactly the same. Um, building rent, looks like there's been, um, a decent more activity, and so that was, um, considerably more than the 50,000 that was budgeted before. And so that was raised to $250,000. Um, those are the only revenues, it looks like. Uh- And then, uh, 2.65 million total expenditures as well. There's the H, budgeted $100,000 transfer to the renewal and replacement fund, which is just trying to build up reserves in that fund for, um, bigger items that may, may come up. Uh, you know, um, the parking lot, I think, was one that may have been just done recently, and, um, just other, you know, bigger, big roof replacement, any, any of the bigger things, just trying to accumulate funds for that. Um, yeah, operating maintenance brought up $15,000. Uh, some of these other things staying, staying exactly the same. Professional services, um, the, were trending higher than what we had budgeted, 925,025. Were trending higher. We've already spent more than that in '25, so that was raised to $1,415,000. Um, catering, so we didn't have anything budgeted for catering this, um, this year, but we've, in recent years, we've been spending a considerable amount on already 186,000 through nine months of the year. So the 200,000 was put in for that.
Tim, on the revenue side, um, real quick, um, I have the recommendations, anyway, from the, uh, Pasco City Council, and on their hotel motel tax, it looks like they are recommending, and again, I want to be very careful here, because I don't want to overcommit or anything. Their recommendations are to commit $200,000 to the Happo Center, and an additional 10,000 to Happo Target Marketing. So, um, that's revenue that isn't realized in here that'll, uh, most likely make its way in there.
I do believe, and we would have to verify this, I do believe that they passed that, um, hotel motel tax, um, or they adopted the recommendation by the Hotel Motel Tax Advisory Board, um, with that in there. We would need to verify that, but I believe that that has been allocated.
Let me make sure, and that'll be another sticky note.
I love sticky notes.
But, uh, that would be a big, that'd be the first big.
So I can't speak on the specific activities that they're doing, but, you know, it looks like, um, they're bringing in, it looks like the plan is to bring in more event service revenue, and then, and then professional services on the other side is what we're, um, paying more on. Part of that, I think, just being the, the fees to H, HWL would be part of that, I, I believe. Um, but a lot of, a lot of the stuff is staying, staying flat from one year to the other, other than like catering services was one that stands out.
Is there a separate, separate line for, um, um, landscape maintenance and operations?
It's probably just in professional services. I think there, I think at one time, there, there was, but it looks like it's, oh, uh, Maintenance Grounds, they've got $1,300 budgeted for it.
I, that's something that we should, we should address. Um, there was no, they told me there was no, um, line item in there for any of the maintenance. So we did all the cleanup this last, last year. And, uh, so I went over there with my own, uh, tools. I have a four-wheeler with a sprayer with a, you know, the fans out and spray. So I've sprayed the, the back grounds twice, um, spraying weeds and so forth. And, uh, that's not a sustainable model to do it that way. Um, so that's something we probably should ask them to clarify what is, I'm pretty sure it costs us more than 1,300 a year to go the yard.
I mean, so far this year, we've spent almost 2,600. And, and I'm not sure what that, what exactly that pays for, but- The, so far this year, we've spent $2,600, so double what we're budgeting for next year. And, and I'm not sure, I would, I can look at the detail, but I'm not sure what all that 2,592 has, has covered.
Came through, or came through, we said it one time. You know, what I do.
I, I think, I thought at one point they were contracting with bona fide landscaping.
They are.
Wascitos is who does the landscaping there today. They did it last year. It's Wascitos.
Okay, okay.
So looking at this right here, is this something that we need to adjust? So we've spent almost double what our-
Yeah, I mean, it looks like the, looks like we're definitely- definitely spending a lot more on that for whatever reason. The the years before that weren't.
Well, they're putting on more events, so.
Well, I wonder, I I wonder if if this isn't similar to what Mr. McCart was describing with building and planning. I wonder if we need to go in and and clean it up and and put things where it actually belongs because that number right, this number right here for a facility of that size, there's no way that this is accurate.
Well, in fact, I think you're right. We'd almost have to go back to, and I think there, I think they have been trying to do that in recent years, get it to more level, but I think in one of our more recent years, most everything was coming through this this line right here when we when we had a previous contractor here. I don't I don't think a lot of the detail was showing up in in the individual lines, so I think some of these may be, I think some of these may be light because they were flowing through just one one line.
Yeah, I mean, look at this.
A portion of time and that may have been, it may have been, I can't even remember the timing now. It may have been 2023 for the most part.
I'll tell you the secret to where, right there, in the line item where it goes from 220,000 to 1.1 million and then never goes back down. That supports what Tim's saying. So I would agree, Commissioner Bellman, if you're wanting to get a more accurate depiction of what each line item and where each dollar is going, we probably would need to move away from that model, but that is your dead giveaway that that's exactly what happened. They combined everything, put it in professional service.
Yep. But it is also, I mean, even now, we're operating different than we were before because before we, at one point, we had a considerable number of staff out there, which we don't have anymore. And so in the in the past, if you go back pre '23 or whatever it was, there was a lot of salaries and benefits and and it's we've moved down to the professional services category where we're paying a contractor for for this work instead of salaries and benefits. So there has been a migration along the way. I don't know if the salary.
But some of this stuff should be pretty easy to pretty easy to identify and put it in the right, you know, like the sewer and water. I don't see that maybe slide down just a little bit. But the this facility, since its inception, has never cost that little to provide water and sewer services. It's never been that small of a number since its inception.
I mean, I can I can work with Brian to, Brian and HWL is necessary to, I mean, I can just look at previous months as far as some of this stuff to try to get a better idea of what the the budget should be for '26.
So here's another example. We went from 7,300 to 187,000 in one year.
Whoever we were getting electricity from this year, we should go back to them.
Yeah, exactly. I really like that idea and apparently we didn't even pay for insurance in '23. Yeah, sure, absolutely.
It's very hard to look backwards and and to be able to get those accurate as far as what happened in the past. But I do agree with Tim. I think there's a natural migration that's taking place and that we will get there. And it'll be, I think we can get there soon too, maybe perhaps even this year. The the issue, this is kind of the this is why folks from the general public have a hard time reading a government budget. Is because everybody on God's earth knows that it costs more than $754 in the year 2023 to have water and sewer, right? Everybody, that's a common sense thing. But the way that we, and this kind of goes to some of our financial policies too. The way that we allowed the folks that oversaw each department or each elected official to spend down to the bottom line, that's the reason behind that. Because it just it just simply a lot of time and and migration and new new processes, but if you if you don't have a policy or if you don't have a process by which you try to accurately track your expenditures expenditures, this is pretty, this is actually pretty common. I bet you, Tim, could probably find numerous places in the budget where that's happened over the years where you go, I know that can't possibly be accurate, so what happened here? And then you look at the bottom line and the bottom line is within, you know, $200, so they just have coded it wrong. And and I'm gonna say this is not here in Franklin County, but I've seen it in the past in other counties. They've done, that is done on purpose sometimes.
No, I I fully understand. I'm just.
Not here, I don't believe.
We've had about 12 months of of pretty clean running, I think. And so, you know, looking at looking at these kind of numbers right here. You know, if we could if we could get our 24, 25 actuals and get it projected out to where that that we get a much more accurate, you know, to go from 16, I mean, the gas bill is what the gas bill is and.
I think that we could get that off the finance enterprise, couldn't we? Because every time that I'm approving the expenditure request, it should be.
Yes, yes. Yes, we can. We can get that information. I mean, that's what I was thinking about doing is going through each of these lines and look at the monthly detail to see what what a better estimate of of the end of year would be.
I feel like that in in the work that Eric Johnson's doing on our behalf, that this is going to come into into that as as the negotiation with Pasco and they're asking the questions of what is. This right here is not helpful. This forward is and, you know, the closer that we can get this here to match what this and this is, I think that's going to be to our advantage and for the for the clarity of everybody involved. Yeah. All right, I'll shut up.
That was yesterday. I'm sorry? Uh, yeah, like that and the Geo 1004. The Geo 1004 is one that. Uh, 405.
I can fill in for Barney's spot right now.
Well, let's change seats then.
Let's change seats then. You're gonna be out over there. I don't know. I'll tell you guys what the most hilarious part of that was, is that Barney has, and I think it must be because he can smell my dogs, but he loves me because he sits over here. I got Tim Anderson looking at me.
Did you have bacon in your pocket again?
I usually carry some bacon in my pocket.
You told me about that when you were on the campaign trail.
Yeah, why don't we get out of the meeting first? I can tell you another one that you guys will all like and it'll actually might have been a relative of Commissioner Mullins that it applies to.
This will be good.
Are we?
Are we done?
We don't have anything else the rest of the week, right?
That's it.
You were correct.
I thought we got Friday.
That was for any kind of like postponed minutes?
Yes, yes. Anything that we need to review. But I think we've covered it all. And at this point in time, I think that we are done, aren't we?
Yeah.
So I will adjourn the workshop.